Morning and welcome to Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for July 9, 2024. Call this meeting order. We'll begin by reporting out on closed sessions.
Report out of closed session from June 25th, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Braidman versus county workers, compensation appeals board case number ADJ 16680200. Board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session for today, July 9th, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference at legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at all, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 19CV4471. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcus Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: service employees International Union Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation and re-national prescription opioid litigation, County of Calaveras at all versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation at all, United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, member case number 118OP45645.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on these items? Seeing them, we will recess to closed session, returning at nine o'clock for the regular board meeting. Thank you. Morning. Welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for July 9, 2024. If you are able, you please rise for the pleasure agents.
Surprise, top, now, will you leave us in ten to five?
Please go ahead and get the badge to our flag.
Our flag is to declare the United States of America and to recall it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever to be.
Thank you very much. We're going to begin with a report out from closed session this morning.
Report out of closed session, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at all, Calaveras County Support Case number 19CV44471. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcus Munoz, and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: service employees International Union Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, unrepresented employees. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation and re-national prescription opioid litigation, County of Calaveras at all versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation at all, United States District Court of the Northern District of Ohio, member case number 118OP45645. Board action on a motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Follendorf, the board voted 5-0 to add additional defendants to the litigation. Once the complaint is filed and we have a final list of defendants, names will be released.
Thank you very much. Move on to staff announcements. Is there any staff in the room that would like to make announcements? Doug, come on down, or whoever gets there first.
Cory?
Sure.
Come on down, Cory.
Good morning, Chair members of the board, Cory Allen, Health and Human Services. I wanted to just give you a gentle update about the cooling center operations that occurred last week. As you can tell, already today, it's already hot. One thing that we have been able to do is coordinate with our local partners and other county departments, and we were able to support the core needs of 114 people throughout our county. We had fantastic support with the City of Angels, with our librarian Nancy Giddens, and huge kudos to Michael McGonagall and Stacy Johnston, who were out every day during that time, making sure that we were able to monitor and maintain those centers. This week, we've transitioned, you should see this little fire circulating on our rotation here, down to one site in San Andreas, and that will be open Monday, July 8 through Friday, July 12, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Anytime a person needs transportation support, they can contact Calaveras Connect, dial ride at 209-754-4450. We ask that you call by 3 p.m. the day prior to ensure that you can be picked up and brought to the site. So again, thank you to all staff and volunteers that supported this effort.
Thank you, Cory. Well, Nancy, you're supposed to be coming up somewhere down the agenda here next.
I know, I'm sorry, but I have to make an announcement. Nancy Giddens, county librarian. I wanted just to report our summer numbers, because they're so amazing. We have twelve, close to 1,250 children enrolled in our summer reading program. It's an absolute awesome time. Our children are enjoying their books weekly, and, oh, and we have some take and leave packets for them to take away, and they're just having a wonderful time. Parents are thrilled that their children are reading and bridging that learning gap over the summer. So, we will celebrate this great success on July 20th at San Andreas Central Library, 5 to 7, our great summer reading celebration. There will be games, there will be photo booths, karaoke, free food, and, you know, at the library, everything is always free. So, we hope that you'll come and enjoy this evening. I also wanted to report that our Lunch at the Library program is going better than it ever has before. We had planned to make just three trips over to Amador County to pick up food, but our numbers are so great, we're having to go every day. We have over 1,000 children enrolled in this program, and we have already, in the four weeks that we've been serving, have given almost as many as we gave in the six weeks last year. So, this is just a wonderful, wonderful thing. I sit at my desk, and our pickup station is right outside my window, and I see people coming. It's just a wonderful sight to know that we're helping to alleviate that extra expense that families have during the summer. We will continue the service to Highway 4, because their school district or their summer break is longer, so that service will go till August 2nd. That will be for Copperup, Los Angeles Camp, Murphy, and Arnold. Our service to this side of the county will end on the 19th, when the school starts the next week. So, we've just had a wonderful, wonderful summer. I'm so glad I stayed for it.
Chairman, members of the board,各位， chief building official, I just wanted to give you a brief update on our cannabis permit program. As your board is where we commence the ad hoc committee, we've completed nearly all of our meetings, so I can bring you guys a report very soon on our findings. We have one to two meetings left. In addition, your board has asked us to bring back the repeal of 9.22, the cannabis clearance badge for discussion and a potential vote. However, about a month and a half ago, shortly after you asked to bring that vote back, our building inspectors going out and doing our annual inspections of the cannabis sites have identified that there are more than the usual amount of cultivators out there that are substantially out of compliance with some of our fire and building codes. We're currently working with them. I'm not saying that, you know, the industry itself is in a bad way, but there's enough of them out there that have kind of jumped the gun, and we felt it was prudent to hold off on bringing any new items to your board until we could demonstrate that the industry has corrected and that those that were out of compliance have met the minimum standards before we bring anything to you. However, you did directly bring back 9.22, so if your board wishes to have that discussion at the end of the meeting today, see if we want to bring it back regardless, just to put a, you know, put a close to that. Please let me know. I'll be here for the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lisa.
Good morning, Chair, board members, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I just want to give a shout out to our HHSI crew, Red Cross during this event, during the heat, still on through Friday. We have our animal service staff that have been busy not only in the cooling centers, but also in the field rescuing animals. So, I'm going to give a big shout out to my staff or animal services. We do have our cooling center that's open through Friday, I believe. We'll have to double check on that, at San Andreas Library, and we are accepting pets for the first time ever. Cooling centers and the shelters are cohabitating with their animals and their humans. So, that's a plus, first time ever. So, we're really appreciative of that, but I just wanted to provide our public with that update.
Thank you, Lisa. Other staff announcements at this time? Are there any online, Stacy?
We have none online.
Very well. We will move on to recognition and acknowledgements, which I'm going to take privileges chair and read this myself. That's all right. This is a, sorry, Stacy. Please.
Please go ahead.
No, you can read the item.
No.
We'll adopt a proclamation, adopt a proclamation congratulating Nancy Giddens on her retirement. So, Nancy, why don't you come up and have to take this? Ed, why don't you come on up too? You guys are a good team.
Thank you. This is a proclamation congratulating Nancy Giddens on the occasion of her retirement as a county librarian of Calaveras County. Whereas Nancy Giddens began her public service in Calaveras County on April 2, 2016, and whereas Nancy has served as a county librarian for over eight years, and whereas Nancy has endured, has endured many friends of library meetings, too numerous to count, many staff meetings, and has continued to foster, the fostering of new programming for a broad community of library users, and Nancy has earned admiration and respect of her colleagues across the state of California with her dedication, enthusiasm, professionalism, and sense of humor. And Nancy has been a committed and dedicated public service and has worked tirelessly for Calaveras County. And Nancy has been able to obtain grants to facilitate programs such as Hoopla, Zip Books, Canopy, Parks Pass, Story Walks, Lunch in the Library, and many more. Where, and whereas Nancy increased the circulation to over 50% of the county residents and was able to acquire a bookmobile.
Any comments from the board before I open up a public comment? I'm sure there's going to, looks like there's a few public comments in the room. Is there any public comment that I'd like to comment on this item? Carl?
The other day, I was in Nancy's office, and I certainly told her something about myself that I never want repeated. So, I figured I better come up here and say something nice about it. She's done a fantastic job. Her career path has been just absolutely wonderful. I have not seen anybody as accomplished in your position. Along those librarians. So, I'd like to thank you and remember.
Hi, I'm Connie Bowser from Angels Camp. I went to the library and also a member of the Library Commission. I've been a member of the Library Commission for years and years and years. It was so wonderful to have Nancy come and enhance our library system. I was just going to say all the things that you already read, because she's added so much to it, and we are going to miss her so much. But she's a wonderful, wonderful person and deserves her retirement.
What, Terry?
Good morning, Chair Gerendey, and members of the board. My name is Terry Lane, and I am here to honor a woman that I cannot say enough great things about. I'm getting teary-eyed, just this, this is, this is a big, big day for Calaveras. You might not have an idea how loved and respected they've been. And I'll throw Ed in that. In the past eight years, I've had the opportunity to be involved with Nancy and work with Nancy in three different levels. First, with First Spive, eight years ago, I approached the new librarian to see if maybe she'd be interested in figuring out a way that we could expand and enhance the early literacy services for children in the county. And her response was just, yes, absolutely, we got to do it. We got to do what's right for the kids in the county. Let's go for it. Let's figure it out. And for eight years, she's gone for it, and there's been tremendous growth in early literacy for this county. Secondly, a few years ago, I became a member of the County Library Commission, and through that, I really was able to get a peek at the inner workings of this very complex library system. And I see how Nancy, with her vision and leadership, just handles things so gracefully and so professionally, even in the most challenging of circumstances. And she has brought our library system forward. It's progressive. It's a true example of a very successful rural library system. Thank you, Nancy, for that. And then this summer, I happened to be working at the library with Lunch at the Library program. So, I'm working under Nancy and alongside her staff, and it has just truly been remarkable to see Nancy in action and to see that her authentic care for her staff and her passion for what she's doing, it just shines every single day. And her staff respect her and love her, and this move is a big one. But I thank you that in these eight years, I've got to know you, Nancy, and that I've got to work with you and now alongside of you. And I would say that Nancy is the epitome of the word service and integrity. We, as Calaveras citizens, have been so fortunate. Thank you, Nancy. I wish you and Ed the best on your adventures.
Thank you.
So, as a HR director, your retirement wasn't approved. You don't get to retire. And that's the final word. So, when I first started, the, because I started in September of 2015, and we were, we were dealing with people fire, all of those things. We knew the librarian would be retiring the end of the year, and I kept being told over and over, you'll never find a librarian. You'll never find a librarian. I, sorry. I not only found a librarian, I found the best. So, you're going to be nuts.
Hi, I'm Celeste Ordner. I'm on the Valley Springs Friends of Library Board. I'm on the County Library Commission, and I'm an extra hire for the library. So, I get to spend a lot of time at the library. I love being a library lady. Nancy gave me the opportunity to be an extra hire, and it's, she always treats me like part of the staff, which I dearly appreciate. There really are no words to describe the impact that Nancy's had on her library system. She was the right person at the right time for the right job, and who knew she'd be such a dynamo? She's a firecracker. Her energy is only surpassed by her vision, and she always has an adventurous spirit. Let's try this. Let's do this. And if there's a glitch, we'll figure it out. Figure it out. We'll figure it out. About fall, Nancy brought love of humankind to her job. Her legacy is not only the bookmobile and all the wonderful programs that Jack described. Her legacy will be her desire to serve and her compassion for others. Nancy led with her head, but also with her heart. And she has a way of, I've told her this before, she has a way of making everybody feel like she's their friend. Really, that's because she really is their friend. But she really is my friend. I know that for sure. She really is my friend. We have had a lot of talks about a lot of things, and she is my friend. I'll miss her very much professionally, but personally, a lot. Nancy's led with her head, but also with her heart. Her kindness has been her gift to us, and we're all better for having known her. I feel blessed to have known you and Ed. We will find another librarian. We will never find another Nancy. I will miss you so much, Nancy.
Good morning. My name is Diane Jargi, and I'm the president of the Friends of the Calaveras County Library. I just wanted to say a few words about Nancy and what a tremendous job she's done. Not all of the branch assistants could be here today to represent their individual libraries, but on behalf of them, we want to thank her for everything she's done. She's worked so hard to get to know each individual library assistant, their volunteers. She comes to our monthly meetings. She's very, very involved, and we really appreciate that. She was a tremendous support and help for me when I was the president of the Angels Camp Board for eight, nine years, trying to get a new library. And as you all have seen, I think you've been over to our new library branch in Middleton Shopping Center. It is well worth the fight that we did, and Nancy was a tremendous amount of support for that. So, on behalf of all the branches, we love you and miss you. You know, those of us who are in the library system as volunteers, we're like a big family. You know, I've been involved with the library since I moved here 16 years ago. One of the first things I wanted to do was volunteer, and I got involved in the library. It seems like once you get into it, you kind of get stepped in, and you don't want to give it up. So, I feel like we're losing our mother, our friend, our, our best friend. Anyway, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the proper branches and, and he, and whatever.
Hi, my name's Bob Dean. I've been a member of the Friends, County Friends Group since, at an arraignment about the Library Commission, since Steve Wodowski was supervisor. And I've, I've experienced a lot in the library, and I can, I can, I said in another context, and I won't repeat it here. We, we now have the honor of having a library system that is second to none, and it's, it's going to be up to us to keep it. And I would say that the best way that we can honor Nancy and the service that she's given to the county and the people of Calaveras is to take this library system and make it better, and that would be the best way, I think, we could honor.
I'm just going to be Craig Peter, a private citizen for this one. No, I just had to get up and speak. Everything that has been said, I just in total agreement with. But I want to hit a just a different perspective, and you guys have heard this before, but when you're looking for people to be in public service, particularly in an executive level, there's those simple traits I look for. A person of character, who's got it, you know, a person of competence in spades, and then a person can have great chemistry and work with people. Again, all of that is so evident, and to see her pour all those qualities into the service that she gave to the people of this county is tremendous. And I'm also very confident that this isn't going to stop here, that you're just going to shift into a different mode, as I said, different season of life, and I expect you're going to be pouring into people in some way in service. And personally, I'm really glad to be able to be here too, because I just want to thank you again. When I was here in another role, you were such a source of support and encouragement to me, and I think you do that for everybody. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for any comments from board members. Gary, you want to start?
Yeah, thank you. Nancy, thank you very much for all the work you've done. You've done a great job. Thank you.
On everything that everyone said I can't, I don't know what more to add. I just, I remember when I first got on the city council, we were having issues at the library in the city, and city hall wasn't there for a while because I couldn't be in the original city hall. We had to get everyone out of there, and when we were finally were moving staff over, we had this vacant building, and we were going with the front of the library of Angels Camp, and Nancy had just come on board and trying to figure out what we were going to do about the city library. And just you, your staff, working with the city council at the time, and the city really thankful for making that happen. And now, it, it has turned into a place within the community that everyone looks forward to going to, from little to older, and it has, it's been, created a safe haven within the city. And so I really am appreciative of those years that you supported the city, and now going transitioning to the county and seeing more of what the library does at this level. Really appreciate your work and your dedication and investment into not just the library system, but Calaveras County citizens as a whole. So, thank you.
Chair Hubbard?
Thank you. Hi, Nancy. I'll just simply say you are a joy. Getting to know you has been joyous, and being around you is joyous. And thank you so much for your service and everything that you've done. So appreciate.
Your energy and dedication and everything, I mean, it just rubs off on people. And, and, you know, people have always been a part of the library, but, you know, you, you made them want more, want to be a part of the library. And, you know, I still don't have a library in my area, but you brought books to my area, the bookmobile, so that's a step forward, and I appreciate all the good work that you've done.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
I'll do a motion if we, okay?
I want to add my voice to the choir here. Nancy, what you've done for our community, I mean, first off, I am so proud of our library and our county. It's one of the real jewels of it, and a large part of that is a reflection of your heart, and you led with your heart, and you brought people along, you fed people, you clothed people, you provided safe spaces for kids and adults to learn, to see the world outside of Calaveras in a safe place. And you've done everything for our community, and I just can't thank you enough. We have a motion for Supervisor Stopper, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's 5-0. Now, therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors acknowledges Nancy Giddens for her dedication and exemplary service to the county of Calaveras, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors commends Nancy Giddens for achievement in the, achievements in the position of county librarian and congratulates Nancy and congratulates Nancy on the occasion of her retirement. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors on the ninth of July, 2024. Thank you, Nancy. Come on up.
Leave that to you. This is. Have you a little teeny ocean instead of like, hey, that's beginning. Thank you.
That's funny. For.
You're seeing the second before. Come steer. And takes it. My brother has a swing course. How about some God? They don't fit. It's a tick good good. And then stretch. So tip it. Um, see with me. I know it's giving up like I'm going long term.
You're not staying letters with the whole thing.
What a neat lady. Okay, General Public, Stacy, you got you.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay, everybody knows the rules here. Three minutes. If you're talking about an item that's on the agenda, I will stop you and ask you to bring your comments back at that agenda item. No further ado. Carl, you have three minutes.
First off, I'd like to thank the clerk, she's doing a fantastic job. Or I'd like you folks to thank the clerk, she's doing a fantastic job. One of the rules is that I'm supposed to speak directly to the board and not directly to staff. Today's comments, you have to thank Gina Catherine for, who told me, if you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything at all when you go over there. We are working on a little, a little something regarding the new, the new code. And she's just doing a fantastic job. That whole department does a fantastic job. Building, you have Doug Oliver here. He does an amazing job, always, always, always there for the public. Lisa back there. Now that, that building is filled with fabulous people. Never once, never once have I had a bad experience with those folks. We, you know, a lot of them I've known for decades. And things are getting back to normal on this point. Only one person tried to, tried to stop my vehicle and have a conversation with me. And she was a rather lovely looking lady, so I didn't, I didn't have time to stop. I had to get to church. So continually people want to, want to speak. I just don't have the time that I used to. And there's nothing I can do for people. There's really nothing I can do. That's your job, every one of you. I don't, I don't go out there and solicit any, any work. So I think you folks are doing a pretty good job. I think Gary, I heard somebody last week come forward, and they, they mentioned our work, and I know you. I know that you work for people of varying ethnicity throughout your career. You've, people of varying ethnicities that work for you. I wonder if they've said anything bad about you. People like you, and you are a fair man. That's the reason they like you. You're a fair person. Now, it, all governments are inherently racist. That's just the way it is. Doesn't mean that people. It's just the way things are set up, and there's, and people automatically think a certain way. You're not part of this government. You're just a good person. It's doing a good job, and I hope people see that. So I have four seconds, three. Everybody, I have one second if you want to say anything. Okay, there we go.
Come on down, Terry.
Good morning, Terry McGlynn, New California State Committee Chair and Senator. Fabulous presentations this morning. I love this book. It's the U.S. Constitution, and it is the supreme law of the land. You know, they're coming up with bird flu. Please don't forget the Constitution. Don't pull the stuff that happened during COVID because it was all anti-Constitution. I wanted to drop a truth bomb, and that is, we are not a democracy. We're a constitutional republic. That means individual rights, not mob rule. Democracy opens the door for mob rule, and we see it here in California every day. We see it especially on the southern border, where folks are just pouring in military-age fighting men, mostly Chinese, but from other countries too, without wives or children, military-age fighting men. The southern border is not that far from us. Worse, in some ways, are the children that are being trafficked across that border. California is one of the largest areas for trafficking of human flesh. Think about that, because I think all of you have children. If not, you have family that are kids. Most precious beings on this planet are children. And that's been allowed because California is being ran as a democracy, and it's not as a constitutional republic. And one of those things that allows that to happen is the voting system. Now, I was at the fair, as usual, handing out U.S. Constitution. Do you know how many people saw this and stared and came right up to and said, how do we do this? So we're not a selections, we are elections. And when you're in office, you know you won. You weren't selected, you won. So we want one-day voting. Not one person disagrees. Now, ones that disagree are the ones that go, voting by mail is so convenient. Well, how's that working for us? Do you see what's going on in our country right now? So voting should be a little inconvenient. We should have to put a little effort out to be able to vote. The people who are running are putting effort out. This is for our country. This is for our state. This is for our counties. This is for our families, our business, our friends. We should be a little inconvenience. We should have to go in and vote in small polling areas like we used to when I was younger. Mount Ranch Post, Mount Ranch Community Hall, and everybody asked for ID because nobody knew me. They watched me go up, but now I would gladly show an ID. One person won't vote. The big issue here is when people go online and sign up, how are they proving they're citizens? And we have too many documentations of people signing up multiple times. ID required. I need an ID to buy a beer. I think I should be able to show my ID to show I'm a U.S. citizen. I have the right to vote. And then we went through electronic voting machines out because humans can count. We're quite good at it. So anyway, that's it for today. God bless. Thank you so much.
Come on down.
My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. Yesterday, July eighth, I emailed a citizen-initiated complaint to Kathy Gomes, Calaveras County Auditor Controller, formally requesting that a forensic audit be conducted by her Office of Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 and Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2024 Candidate Committee FPPC Form 460s as follows. Primarily stated goals of the Calaveras County Auditor Controller's Office, published on its public-facing website, are to, quote, pursue adoption of policies that prevent fraud or the perception of conflict or fraud, maintain accurate financial data, make that accurate financial data available to the public, and to follow all laws, even if they are in conflict with the how we have always done things, thought process, end quote. Those stated goals, Ms. Gomes, present you with a serious matter now requiring a forensic audit by the Auditor Controller's Office. Supervisor Follendorf repeatedly submitted what I allege to be blatantly erroneous and misleading FPPC Form 460s for her 2020 and 2024 campaign committees, of which she was also the treasurer, creating a, quote, "perception of conflict or fraud," end quote. I allege that Supervisor Follendorf's erroneous and misleading campaign finance filings may constitute fraud and perjury. It is the duty of the Auditor Controller to investigate my credible allegation, backed by well-substantiated primary source evidence contained in the details of Supervisor Follendorf's FPPC Form 460s for the previously referenced campaign committees. FPPC complaint number COM-07082024-02178, filed against Supervisor Follendorf alleges that, one, eighty-four hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents in labor union contributions to Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 are unaccounted for, and alleges that, two, Supervisor Follendorf repeatedly submitted blatantly erroneous and misleading FPPC Form 460 campaign statements to the Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 and Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2024 campaign committees, of which she was also the treasurer, constituting fraud and perjury. This email was copied to Supervisors Follendorf, Garmendi, Hubbard, Stopper, and Toffenelli, as well as CEO Hitchcock, County Council Edwards, County Clerk Recorder Turner, and DA Uke. My name's Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. And one last point, I'm registering my concern as a citizen as to the delay of the release of the grand jury report for the fiscal year just concluded. Thank you, Uke.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Brenda McHenry, and I'm president of the League of Independent Voters of the Motherlode. And our league includes both Calaveras and Tuolumne Counties. The League of Independent Voters is a political, nonpartisan organization which encourages voter education and public participation in political, in government. Recently, we sent you information about our observer corps, letting you know that we will be having, lead, league members attending meetings and reporting our decisions to our Action Committee. That began a few weeks ago. However, you didn't end run on me and started the, started your meeting so quick, I was late. So I couldn't tell you that. Anyway, we've been active in Tuolumne County for several years. And a few months ago, we took their Board of Supervisors to task for not allowing online comments from the public. I was able to point out to one of their members that Calaveras has been allowing that all along. Not that there is any rivalry, but it's nice to know that we in Calaveras are doing the right thing by allowing public participation for everyone. I look forward to learning more and being able to address issues of interest to the League of Independent Voters.
Thank you. You're welcome. Other public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Board members, any items you'd like to remove?
Item number twenty-three.
Thank you. Who else? Staff?
Well, I'm seven, ten, we're bad at lunch.
So, all right, any members of the public?
We have no online requests.
No one in the room? Very well, I will seek a motion for the remainder, which excludes item twenty-three and seventeen.
Both.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Item seventeen is, is pulled, Del, the future date. Right. So we will move on to item twenty-three. Supervisor Toffenelli.
You want to read the item?
Yes. Item three, agreement, Public Works, one, award invitation to bid twenty-three, one, two, zero, zero, two, zero, nine, one, three, to construction services for the Valley Springs School Safety Improvement Project, CML five, nine, three, zero, one, zero, three, and two, authorize the board tariff to execute a contract for construction with George Reed, Inc., in the amount to not exceed one million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Thank you. Sir is tough now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, I'm. Doug was just up here, I'm sorry. I want to thank you and your staff for bringing this, rushing to get to it on the ninth, to move forward on this thing. I know you're meeting with the superintendent, the principal of the school, so everything in me closely. Tomorrow night, the Jenny Lynn Veterans Memorial District Board will be meeting. I will be out that meeting to see if they can help us, anything that we need. I do have one concern though, and that is the surround, during the construction, the surrounding neighbors and what's going on there. So if we can reach out to them, let them know what's going on, and when it's going to start, and how long it's going to take. So they're aware of it, and all, they just all of a sudden get up one morning and things are going on. They don't know what's happening. I truly appreciate it.
We know we need to keep the school involved, make sure the neighbors are informed, all the parents, and try to make sure we do that on a regular basis throughout this project.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's just, just good to see you back on board, Bill. Wait a minute. Mike.
There are left to no further questions or motion?
I move this item.
By Supervisor Toffenelli, is her second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. It's a good project. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Eric, do you need a couple minutes to set up? Are you?
We have it ready.
All right, come on down.
Item twenty-five, informational item OES, receive a presentation from the Resilience, Resilency Initiative regarding the Calaveras County Emergency Operations Plan.
All right.
Members of the board, Chairman Garmendi, CEO Hitchcock, thanks for having us today. I may be up here, but the star of the show is going to be Ms. Andrea Davis here from, who's the CEO and president of the Resilency Initiative, who wrote our EOP this year. She has a wealth of knowledge. She's worked for some pretty small companies in emergency management. So one of the, or the largest retailer in the world, and probably the largest entertainment industry in the world. So I won't name those, but you can. I'll turn it over to her for her presentation, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present the update that we wrote of the emergency operation plan. As Eric mentioned, to me, I started in emergency management way back in nineteen ninety-nine because the world was ending, you might recall, because of Y2K. And I've kind of woven a career, working from local government to federal government, and then transitioned to the private sector. And two years ago, I left the Walmart Corporation to go out on my own, to get back to my roots in doing local planning. And I went to McGeorge Law School in the nineties and spent a lot of time out here when the wineries were just kind of small, and this was a cooler place to be. So I love being here, and I appreciate. So I love being here, and I appreciate this opportunity. So the Resilience Initiative was hired to update the emergency operation plan. The last update the plan went through was in twenty nineteen, and so this was five years, and obviously you all have been through the past five years and know that there was a lot to review and include in this update. The first two slides I'm presenting to you is an overview, kind of a high level of the different updates that we put in, and I'm going to go through kind of in more granular detail in each of the updates. It was really, the first part of it for section one was validating existing plans that the county has outside of just the EOP, but looking at other ones to make sure that the information from the hazard mitigation plan that was just done a couple years ago, that we pulled in. And we wanted to outline any of the supporting documentation and lessons learned from some of the county's activations from the big crises that you've responded to over the past two years. You wanted to leverage that information, it's always good to leverage a bad day because that's where you truly have some lessons learned. In sections three and four, that's when we, we took a real critical eye to updating the demographic maps, looking at hazard profiles, and making sure that we walked, kind of did a crosswalk of disasters for the past ten years, and to make sure, again, that we weren't missing anything from lessons learned, and that the plan was updated accordingly with all of that information. Because even, you know, with the pandemic outside, you know, with the intensity and frequency of the natural disasters, especially that Calaveras is seeing with some of the severe weather, we wanted to make sure to capture that data. And in sections in five and six, it was a little bit more alignment with some of the new ways of doing business from the state level and federal, wanted to make sure that the county structure was in alignment with that, and so spent some time making sure that all of our emergency support functions, you know, the language met, because all of you know, when you're seeking reimbursement after a disaster, it's important that we're speaking the same language that the state wants us to speak, and the feds, so that it can be reimbursed for any of the costs for that disasters. Then looking forward to sections seven through thirteen, we looked at expanding some of the sections, specifically in the communications section, which was section nine, to incorporate social media and ways to communicate to the public in a time of crisis. We also, in section eleven, we updated to include a new training and exercise information in there. We validated the different authorities to make sure there's no new legislation, or codes that could be impacting this plan. And we kind of, there's some consolidation, I would say, in section thirteen, making sure all the acronyms were still valid, and then kind of pulling together the sections in an order that made a little bit more, more sense. So looking at some of kind of that deep dive, in the intent of this plan, the EOP is the county's playbook on how to respond to a crisis. And so we want to make sure it's clear and concise, and it articulates well roles and responsibilities for all of, you know, the leadership in the county. Because all of you know, especially after the past five years, it's very difficult to respond to a crisis if you don't have an understanding of your role, and if you're just coming in, we wanted to make sure that this plan was very clear and able to accomplish that. And so we spent a bit of time making sure that it's, the language comparison I mentioned before between the feds and the states, nationally, we have the National Incident Management System, and the state of California has their standard emergency management system as well, making sure that crosswalk of language and rules all fit that. And we have a matrix within the plan that you can take a look at, articulating who's the lead agency for a specific emergency support function, and then who are the support agencies in that as well. And in section two, this is where we documented our changes and what we meant. And so it's right up front, so you can see, like, oh, I want to see what was specifically done in section three, you could flip to that and see that section that was added or updated. And it's kind of a running list, if you will, and we wanted to provide the flexibility within this new plan, so the emergency, the Office of Emergency Services, if they, they found grammar error or something, they wouldn't have to go through a major rewrite, or have to come back and present to you. So we wrote that into section two, that, you know, giving the director that authority to make those minor changes as needed. The plan distribution, you know, the signed copy will be held at the Office of Emergency Services, and copies will be distributed, and all department heads were given the ability to review and sign off on this new update. For section three, we provided just a little bit of clarity and updates to kind of the purpose and the scope of the plan, and really just wanted to reiterate, you know, using that standard language from the state, so using SAMS, using ICS on a, on a national basis, and wanting to be very clear that the usage of the plan, and that this plan can be used in preparedness efforts as well, and really focusing on, you know, the importance of training, and making sure that department members have this basic understanding of their role in a crisis. And so we articulated kind of the scope, there's the base plan, which is, has, you know, addresses hazards in a very general way. We have our emergency support functions, which is, these are the critical operations that are needed for a crisis situation, and then our supporting annexes. It's where you get into some more details on specific hazards, or specific ways of responding. An evacuation annex was part of the work that we did for this EOP. Some assumptions that we used from the, from the plan was census numbers from twenty twenty-two, with the population of Calaveras at a little over forty-six thousand, and we're assuming the incorporated areas as well, as far as jurisdiction of this plan. Looking at section four, this is the, kind of the broad brush look at hazards that Calaveras has experienced, and looking at it very detailed, and, and making sure we looked at, from the risk profile, like, past risk, but then looking forward, as has there been an increased risk in a certain, with a certain hazard, and then doing that comparison with what we've seen from a response and impact to the county for that risk, and then documenting it. And even, and we broke it up into kind of three distinct categories from your natural hazards, so think earthquakes or in extreme weather, your technological hazards, so your public health emergencies, transportation emergencies, and then security threats, acts of terrorism, civil disturbance, and we even looked at from a cybersecurity threat as well, because that could have a significant impact to the county and how it operates. And in that section four, you'll see each hazard, and kind of deep, very specific details on that risk to the county. In section five, this is your concept, kind of concepts of operations, this goes back to that playbook concept of, like, here, here's my marching orders on how the county's going to respond during a crisis situation, takes you through some of the legal side of emergencies, and how the state has their declaration process, and when you're seeking reimbursement for a disaster situation, it's very important to follow this process to make sure that every penny is reimbursed, that the county is owed. So it explains the declaration process from a state level and then a federal level, and goes through the different phases of emergencies, looks at really important topics for the county, from evacuation and movement of citizens, also looks at access and functional needs, populations throughout the county, and how, and making sure that we looked at, this was one of the, a bigger section that we updated from a succession planning, looking at the continuity of operations for the county. So not just the immediate response to a crisis situation, but looking towards recovery and to the continuity of government. And that can be found in section five. Section six, this is going to the emergency support functions that I mentioned before, looking at that standardized emergency management system, looks at how each function within the county, their role, and which, which ones support a certain section of the incident command structure. So if you look at operations, and you see who, you know, from public works to infrastructure, these are the functions that would be in that specific operations, and then you can move over to the other sections of planning, logistics, and then into the finance and administration sections, and then when you have your EOC director at the top managing the complete incident. More granular detail, here's department by department, and it articulates which departments support that function, and which department would lead that function in a time of crisis. In section seven, this is looking at more of that direction and control and coordination of the crisis. It gives an overview of the different systems, and kind of talks about mutual aid, which, you know, Calaveras, that Calaveras has great relationships with their surrounding counties, and how that you would work together in a time of crisis. All of you know this, you've all been through this and seen this work firsthand, this documents it, and how you approach it. Section eight, this goes to creating, you know, how, we wanted to give that, that common operating picture, and from taking it from the information collection to analyzing that, and then disseminating it. Where we spent a little time in this section was on the dissemination and communicating information out to county citizens, and, but this takes it kind of soup to nuts for you, for anybody who's looking at, at this playbook or at this plan, to understand, like, the role of the EOC is taking, to make sure that they're gathering all this types of information, who's taking a look at it, who's analyzing it, and then what is the best way to disseminate that information, to make sure that people who need to know it are getting it in a timely fashion, so they can take the appropriate action. Section nine, here's comms, this is the section we updated to make sure we included social media, because that is a great way, an avenue, where you can build trust in the county, especially from the Office of Emergency Services, having a social media presence, and showing the county the different tools that are available for citizens, to make sure that they're receiving timely alerts. And so, and also, if you look at the second half of that slide, for access and functional needs, making, we wanted to capture the different needs that, to make sure that were accessible to the different populations within the county, and then looking at ways in which we can improve the ability to communicate those who might need a different mode of communication. In section ten, this took the deep dive into the finance and admin logistics side of the functions within emergency response. These are critical functions, especially when you are seeking reimbursement from the state or the federal government, and so we wanted to make sure that we had reviewed all the current rules and regs on this as far as seeking reimbursement, so we did a crosswalk on all the current code sections to ensure that, and made, and really spent a lot of time being detailed with the record keeping, because every disaster I've personally ever worked, this is always the sticker, where someone didn't keep the receipt, and then you are unable to get reimbursed for a large amount of money that you should be reimbursed for. And so this is always kind of the least thought of section of the plan, and so we spent a lot of detail here, because I feel it's important, I've just seen counties not get reimbursed because they didn't follow, you know, kind of the current requirements. Section eleven, this goes to kind of the maintenance of, of the plan, and making sure that, that it's going to be updated on every three years, we felt that that would, is, with the current, you know, frequency of change that we're seeing, especially with disasters, that three years was a good earmark, but also not missing the opportunity to update the plan if the county responds to a major disaster. So using that information in an after-action report to update the plan, so you can capture all that, again, leveraging that bad day. And part of this section, we built in where each department will be responsible for, you know, training their staff, and making sure that they have the current information in the plan. We created trainings to make this easy and accessible, and Eric and Baljeet, you know, will be administering kind of the, the trainings on this updated plan for them. But we wanted to make sure that there was definitely buy-in from the different departments on the importance of making sure any new staff has been trained in this, and so we wrote that into the plan. And then section twelve, this was all the authorities and references that we reviewed, and made sure that the EOP met these different standards from both a local, state, and federal, and they're all listed in the plan. And then there's some different attachments that we included in section thirteen, there's that emergency support matrix that I showed you on the screen about the different departments and their roles and responsibilities, the, a quick reference guide to emergency proclamations, all of you are aware, the importance of just the language that is used in a time when you're declaring an emergency, glossary and acronyms, all government entities love their acronyms, and so we wanted to make sure that you had those in there as well. And then the after-action report form issued by the state, wanted to have that at the ready, because that's another thing, a nice feather in your cap if you're following their form and the procedure after an incident occurs. And then the final page of the EOP is the resolution for the, the board to adopt. And so I paused at that moment to ask if you have any questions or feedback for, for me?
Questions? Susan Henderson?
I have one question. It came up again, I know we've talked about it in the after-action from the last fire, and it was vaguely mentioned in the beginning, under the assumptions, but time and time again, I've heard the same thing happen, of lack of notifications to the city. The city is the central hub, and we're getting to that side of the county, but they're not notified of the amount of chat, you know, resources coming, the resources needing to set up within, and so how is that notification been going to improve within this plan?
So this, the EOP was the base plan that we presented today, we, Resilience Initiative has also completed the evacuation annex, that is, being, we're going to move into the transition of training that out, but I'm also very happy to report that we were able to rework FireSafe Council grant allocations, where we've now hired her team to complete access functional needs, animal control services, and volunteer management to add in to our EOP, which is what I feel is the greatest use of our grant funds right now, is that base plan. And what we do is we take that, you know, I, I came in sixty days ago roughly, and my first week was spent reading the EOP, that was under draft, because that's the best way to get to kind of up to speed with everything here. And so as we continue to roll out, we're going to adapt our training, our three-year plan and training, and our policies and guidelines in those annexes. So it's all going to be kind of this full-scale adaptation within these annexes to, to identify. I just completed the Arrow Fire, AER, yesterday, and disseminated that to everybody that's a part of the emergency services teams within the county. And we don't, we don't identify something and then don't come up with a plan to fix it. So as we've met with and discussed, we had a miss on the Arrow Fire that I feel is important, that we're going to bring right into our access and functional needs planning annex, and we've already sat down this morning and talked about it. So a lot of it's just identifying, and once it's identified, we create plans to fix it, and we'll continue to do that every day that we come to work.
Okay, thank you.
Um, step one question, because when we did talk, I was thinking there was going to be another plan, to be honest, that was going to come in front of us today, and I realize in talking to the CEO, that knowing how new you are, and you're not familiar, and there's a lot of things happening at once, how, in the future, and I know you've already tried setting up meetings with the council of government, but how will, when it does come back to the board of supervisors, I'm hoping it comes back to the board of supervisors, does the evacuation and assessment, access needs, assessment permit, fairness plan overlap into this plan? That Gary and I have been at the forefront of that on the COG board, we've already gone ahead and at the COG level, completed the plan, the city has adopted it, but the county has not, and because there were timelines with grants, so the last, we just recently applied for a grant on June third, but once, and when that comes to the board, how would that overlap with this plan as well? And that, to talk about transportation and transportation.
Yeah, so CEO Hitchcock and I had a discussion about that last week, and this Friday, I will be meeting with Ms. Ragio from the COG, we're going to sit down, and we did, we were able to take your, the annex from the COG, and work some of it into our evacuation annex toward the end of it, some of the specific data. But from here, we take what their office has done, or their company, and we But from here, we take what their office has done or their company and we go out and we find what works best within our community. You know, these are playbooks that we use. And then our local office will hone that in with other governments and mutual aid and stuff like that. So, Friday, we'll be sitting down with Ms. Ragio and we're going to hammer out some plans to, for improvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to that collaboration because we've been on this for three years. So, I look forward to seeing that come back and make sure the rest of the board can see that plan as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we'll be rolling out in the next week or two on the training countywide for that evac stuff. And then, again, this, you kind of build in layers. So, we've got the base plan here today and the evacuation annex. The evacuation annex will support the access and functional needs in animal services. So, as we work through this process over probably the next six months with those annexes, then our office will take it, we'll train it out, and then we'll continue collaboration with local entities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I went to your website while we were going through this and the plan that's on your website is this current plan right now?
Uh, not until it's approved, sir. No, that's the 2019 version.
Okay, so it won't be this plan until we adopt it, won't be on there. Is there a red line version? That you could, we could compare it to red?
Yeah, we sent out to all the signers for the board because we wanted everybody approval before we brought it to you. So, I do have that. Do you, are you asking for what the changes are from the 2019 to the 20?
Yeah, I'm going to compare it to red line, see what. Is that something you can email out to or something?
Yeah.
Oh, definitely. I think so. And then also in section two, it does articulate the specific areas where we did update in the verbiage.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get you guys that today. I just wanted to also recognize Baljeet. You know, I'm new here. He's worked on this for the last six months, a year.
Missed a year.
Almost entirely. So, I may be sitting up here, but he really deserves the kudos on this. So, I really wanted to recognize him for that.
Here. When will we be seeing this coming back for the board for final adoption?
Uh, so, we had a couple revisions. I would say in the next two weeks to a month, we'll get it out here as we roll out that evac training as well. So, I'll probably just send that to you guys inclusive of both of them.
Thank you. Other questions in the board?
Just thank you for getting this in front of the board.
Absolutely.
Been a long time, Woody.
This is not an action item, but we'll do, if there's any public comment in the room on this? Nope? Heart, thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the work. Thank you guys. All right, let's move on to item 26.
Item 26, action item administrative office. One, approve an allocation of $15,000 to Amador Senior Center for Meals on Wheels services for Calaveras County residents. And two, make a public benefit binding.
All right. And CEO?
So, I believe we have the Amador Senior Center folks here to make a presentation on this item. This is an item that was previously budgeted for Common Grounds. As many of you know, they've ceased operations at the end of this year. So, we were looking for another entity to provide the Meals on Wheels program since it is very valuable to many of our seniors throughout the county. And this item is simply to transfer what we typically allocate for that program to the Amador Senior Center. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to them.
Nice. Come on up. Good. You can come up here if you like or?
If you, you wanted to share your presentation, correct?
Well, good morning, Chair Garamendi and board. It's a pleasure to be here today to introduce myself and our organization to Calaveras County. My name is Chris Colton and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Amador Senior Center since 2018. I also reside here in Calaveras County. I actually live in Angel's Camp and have been here for 14 years and commute to work. So, this is personal for me too in providing these services to Calaveras County. So, it's a real honor to be with you today. Our organization has existed since 1981 in providing services to older adults, primarily in Amador County. And we exist to support the independence and well-being of older adults through advocacy, support, education, and activity. When I speak publicly, I quite often ask those who are listening, who of you would like to take your last breath? Where would you like to be? And 100% of the time, I hear back in my home. Sadly enough, the statistics don't bear that out. Most people take their last breath outside of their home. In fact, it's under 25% will actually pass away in their home. But our goal is to help older adults to live at home as long as possible independently, giving them the dignity that they deserve. So, Meals on Wheels helps us do that. It helps us accomplish those tasks. And one of the things that people quite often misunderstand is that it's just about nutrition or food. And what we like to say is that Meals on Wheels is really more than a meal. In fact, it's a lot more. Meals on Wheels provides a wellness check from our driver who can assess older adults who are living independently and notify emergency contacts if they see a change in health or well-being. In fact, one of the programs that we offer is social connection. And we've launched this in Amador County through a volunteer model. Our social connection comes through a pure visitor program in which older adults who volunteer within our community to be a pure visitor to our clients who are homebound and provide that extra social connection that our drivers can't in the two to three minutes it takes to drop off a meal. We received a grant for Meals on Wheels and were just notified about three weeks ago that was inclusive of Calaveras County. So, our hope is by the fall to extend that program into Calaveras County so that it's beyond just a meal. We also provide dignity and independence to older adults as they live alone and continue to provide that supportive services to them as they age. A fourth component of Meals on Wheels that's quite often overlooked is the need that older adults have for their pets. And quite often, older adults have pets to have some sort of social connection, some sort of purpose. It gives them a person, so to speak, to talk to. And every time I speak publicly, I always ask the question, how many of you have a pet? And do you speak to your pet? Of course you do. And so, older adults do the same thing. It gives them that sense of companionship. And so, what we want to do is provide support to those pets as well so that older adults don't compromise their own nutritional health in providing that health or the resourcing to their pet. So, we wrote a grant for a pet support program, again encompassing Calaveras County. And Meals on Wheels graciously awarded that gift to us as well of $10,000. So, we can extend our pet program, which runs in Amador County and has for the last three years, to Calaveras County as well. So, I just want the board to realize that this is more than a meal and that when you fund this, you're funding multiple aspects of what we're doing and accomplishing as a center.
So, you, you're saying you deliver pet food too then? So, it's Meals on Wheels for the seniors and the pets?
We provide pet food and pet supplies. We also have a small portion of our grant that's dedicated to veterinary services for those older adults. It doesn't cover spay and neutering, but it does cover wellness checks. It covers vaccinations and that sort of thing. So, we do have funding for that. Again, that program will probably roll out in the fall. We're just attempting to tackle as of July 1st, our meal delivery. In fact, our driver is in the Valley Springs area today dropping off meals as we speak. In Amador County, we serve 800-plus clients through our nutrition programs and we served just over 50,000 meals last fiscal year, which was quite an accomplishment. For this fiscal year, taking on Calaveras County will push us beyond 75,000 meals in an annual performance, and we're really proud of that fact. We are contracted to provide 27,721 meals to Calaveras County and we look forward to doing that in this next year. Just to make the board aware and the community aware of our process for how this happens and how people can get on the program, a client or a family member would make a request for services by calling Amador Senior Center or by emailing us or contacting us through our website. We would then put the client or client's family member through a brief assessment that asks three or four essential questions about their status as far as driving, their status as far as living situation. Do they live alone? Do they have others with them? What age are these individuals? Their disability status? And then we can determine whether or not services can begin. We will then begin services and then within two weeks, we will perform an in-home assessment where one of our staff members will show up to the individual's home and spend 10 minutes to 30 minutes discussing with this individual and going through some risk scores because this program is meant for the most frail and riskiest of those who live alone or live with somebody who's disabled. And these are folks that are the most vulnerable in our community. So, we are there to provide these services to people who are, who are highest risk for malnutrition, social isolation, and for an inability to access resources. That in-home assessment then, if the person, an individual is determined to be fully qualified for the program, will then be put fully on the program after that two-week period. And then three months later, a phone assessment will be performed by one of our staff or volunteers to check up on that individual again for any new health information, any falls or spills that they have taken, any update to their health status, just to check in with them and again, give that social connection alongside the social connection our driver gets. And then, once we launch our pure visitor program, a more in-depth social connection so you can see it's layered on for clients to have a consistent social connection, particularly when they're isolated in rural areas like the ones we serve. And then these repeat themselves in a cycle, as you can see through the arrows on the process. Three months after the phone assessment takes place, six months after the initial home assessment, another home assessment is, is performed by one of our staff members. And then, three months following that, a phone assessment and the cycle repeats itself. The reason that we do this is not only to socially connect and make sure that that individual is well-cared-for, but it's also to continue to qualify that client. So, if a client were to make improvements, if they were to become less vulnerable in the process and we determine somebody else is more vulnerable, we would shift that individual off of the program. Not a very popular action, but it does happen. And then shift a new client on who meets a higher risk score for the program. So, as we have inherited the clients from the prior provider, history has shown us that a good percentage, up to 20% of current clients, don't qualify for the program and we are finding that to be true now. I only disclose that to you so that as you hear from people in the community that Amador Senior has kicked them off the program, please realize that they have to qualify for the program and we have to serve the most vulnerable in the, in the population. Limited dollars are available, so we want to be good stewards with what we've invited through our grant money, through the Area 12 Agency on Aging, through Meals on Wheels, and graciously by the Board of Supervisors for Calaveras County. So that you know that your dollars are going to the most vulnerable in our community. Here's a little bit about our meal delivery. We offer a very diverse menu of beef, pork, and chicken. We also offer fish options as well. They're freshly prepared in our kitchen every single day. Due to the length of transportation, we're unable to provide a hard-hot delivered meal every day in Calaveras County. So, we take those meals that are freshly prepared and we flash-freeze them to retain the nutrient content as well as the moisture content of the meal to increase the experience of clients and to make sure that they have a good experience. Early feedback from our driver has been very positive that clients in Calaveras are very satisfied with the meals and they find it to be a great improvement over what they were receiving the year prior. These meals are then delivered weekly and we deliver them on a one-week trailing menu with Amador Senior Center's meal delivery in Amador County. So, the meals that are being consumed this week in Amador are being flash-frozen for delivery in Calaveras next week.
See that?
A little bit more about our meals. They're dietitian-designed to meet one-third of the calorie intake or need of a client. They're low in sodium and they're vitamin-rich. As far as participant cost, there's no qualifying client. No qualifying client will be refused service for their inability to contribute. And the participant contribution request is only $4 per meal. This helps to supplement the program and keep it going and keep it funded. And then finally, in conclusion, quite often people will ask us in the community, how can I help? How can I be involved in this? And let me just tell you that there are a couple of different ways that the community can get involved to take ownership of this program. Amador Senior Center is privileged to step into the community and provide these services, but we can't do it alone. We need the partnership of the community. First of all, people in the community can volunteer. I'll give you one example. Starting July 1st, we recruited a volunteer out of Arnold and the volunteer meets our driver in Murphy's and did so for the first time last week. We provide all of the equipment for that to happen. The individual met our driver in Murphy's, picked up seven meals and headed up Highway 4 to Arnold and delivered those meals as a volunteer, thus saving us in transportation costs, labor costs, and really helping the program. We'd love to see any listeners or people in the community or constituents to volunteer with the program through a like effort. Anybody in Valley Springs, Moke Hill, the Highway 26 corridor up into West Point, Mountain Ranch, San Andreas, Angels Camp, Copperopolis, these are our main routes. And any individual who has a little time to devote and wants to be involved in the program, this is how Calaveras can keep this program going and keep the quality of the program intact. Simply volunteer an hour of your time, meet our driver, we will transfer the meals to you, we will have a delivery list for you. And all of our volunteer drivers in Amador County tell us they get more out of the experience than they give. They are rewarded highly for it. And so, I would encourage, I would implore people in Calaveras County to get involved and take ownership of this program. This is your county. Let's make it a great county. You can also donate. We do take financial support. We're a nonprofit organization, so we will receive tax-deductible gifts. So, as people think about legacy giving or they think about a monthly support to the senior center, it would be greatly appreciated to keep these programs going. So, checks can be written, donate online, we have that option as well, but those are some great ways to partner with us. And then finally, organizationally, governmentally, to partner with us. The Resource Connection has immediately out the door partnered with us. They're providing whole wheat bread to our clients, which keeps our costs down. We pick that up on Wednesdays from the Resource Connection and we distribute that out to the clients. We see that as an open door to next steps with the Resource Connection. Perhaps we can provide fruits and vegetables and things that the Resource Connection cannot because we have the infrastructure of delivery and the Resource Connection may not have those resources to distribute food out into the community. So, we're looking forward to growing that partnership and seeing where it goes. As you can see, this is more than a meal. This is support services to older adults as they age. With that, I would request that you would release $15,000 in support of this program at Amador Senior Center, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Prior with, with Common Grounds doing, doing the deliveries, were you the ones preparing the meals for them and they pick them up in Amador County?
No.
No, okay, it was a different.
Yeah, it's cool then.
Okay. Okay, that's what it was. Excellent. We thank you for picking up and filling this void for us. It's, you know, the people here that do use it are very thankful. I've talked to a few of them in the past and everything and we, it's definitely a needed service that definitely benefits the older generations of our community. Just listening to your numbers, you know, we have a slightly larger population in Calaveras County. Hopefully, we can bring that number up of people that actually can benefit from this in the future. Thank you.
Chris, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge Kristen Milhoff, who is the Director of the Area 12 Agency on Aging. I just wanted everybody to know that you originally signed on to take a part of Calaveras County. And when nobody else came up with the other half, you actually went ahead and went back to your board and fought to get it so that you could cover all of Calaveras. And I just wanted to thank you for that and look forward to working with you. Thanks.
I want to echo Martin. Thank you both for acting so fast to respond and also Cory's staff as well with collaborating in getting this where there isn't a disruption of the services being provided for Calaveras County resident. So, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys too for picking up the loose end that we had here. Beneficial to a lot of our seniors and like Ben said, there's probably more out there that doesn't know or haven't. There's probably more out there that doesn't know or haven't reached out or somebody hasn't reached out to you yet, so, um. But I do have a question, uh, you, you flash freeze. So when, when the meals are delivered, are they ready to eat, do you? You don't deliver them frozen, they have to thaw them out or they have to put them in the microwave, how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question, they are delivered frozen and we place a label on each one. Uh, instructing clients on how to properly reheat them and we encourage them to take them, if they're going to be consumed in the next few days, to immediately put them in the refrigerator. So that they can begin that, that defrost process so that when it hits the microwave, the client isn't transitioning that meal from, from a zero degrees all the way up to a one forty. It's a much easier transition on that meal. If they were to keep it in the refrigerator and their experience would be better, that doesn't mean that all will follow the, the instructions. Um, but our goal is to really uh increase the quality of the client experience and we put emphasis around that a lot.
And you deliver one time a week, one meal a week, is that?
We do, we have five routes throughout Calaveras and we deliver one time per week, those five meals.
So it's five meals that are frozen and and they can put a four in their freezer and put one in the refrigerator to thaw. And continue that process for the five days of the week.
Right, that's sort of how we encourage them to transition those meals, if um they receive their meals today, let's say, we would encourage them to put two meals in the refrigerator. So that they begin that defrosting process, it usually take about two days depending on the item. But last week, just to give you a sense of what they received, they, they got uh smoked ribs, meatloaf. Uh, home, homemade meatloaf, they're, they're getting some very nice meals.
I'm, I'm looking at the steak you have sliced up there and it looks good to me.
I would love to tell you those are uh stock images, they're not, every image in that PowerPoint was from our center. Very proud of our program.
Well, thank you, thank you both.
Chris, can I just ask you one more question, uh, if people wanted to volunteer, who should they contact? Just give us a call at the center, Audrey Riddle is our program coordinator for Calaveras County, we've devoted an entire program coordinator to this county. And her extension is one zero six, the phone number is pretty simple, it's two, two zero nine area code of course. Two, two, three, zero, four, four, two, extension one zero six, you can find all of this information on our website at amadoreseniorcenter.org.
Thank you.
Cause I want to just throw my voice in it, well, echo again what my board member, fellow board members have said, thank you very much for being here in county and working on these projects. I'm glad to see, you know, HHSA did their strategic plan and health assessment and social isolation. Especially among our seniors is, is a real health crisis for our community and I appreciate you working with our senior resources and all of the agencies that go in there, there's. In a country that's as bountiful as the United States and especially California, nobody should go hungry. So I really appreciate you guys stepping up and thank you board, I think this is a really important thing to do, so. Uh, I need a motion.
I'll move.
Stop it.
There you go.
Let's jump in there quick, you know.
Okay, Supervisor Hubbard, Supervisor Faldor, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait one second, is there any public comment? I apologize, hold that eye.
You, and that's okay, I was like, oh wow, okay, this is different. Good afternoon, Kristen Milhoff, Area Twelve Agency on Aging Director, I'm here in support of Amador Senior Center. Um, Supervisor Hubbard, he said it earlier that, you know, they only applied to do half the county, um, when we went out for our RFP. Um, we did not receive another bidder, um, I reached out to Chris and said, hey, do you think you might be interested? And he's like, sure, let's a couple of extra meals, I'll take it to my board. So, um, you know, I just have to say, it's been such a pleasure working with Chris and his staff. The dedication, the mission that they have to feed people, to give them more than just a meal, and as you can see by his presentation today. Speaks value to who he is, his board and his center and we just look forward to continuing to work with him. And I hope, well, you will be voting for it and continue to support him in his efforts and to get that community involvement, so thank you so much for your time.
And I apologize for my oversight, are there, are there any other public comments in the room? Are there comments online?
We do not have any public comments online.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, case five out, counsel, I get that all right?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code five-three-two-three-two-point-three-D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency. And may make other announcements or report out.
All right, I want to start off with, we started our meeting with a request from supervisor Doug Oliver regarding a nine-two-two. Uh, requesting if the board still wanted to have this item come back. Um, but it's a pleasure of the board. Supervisor Tupper, you want to hear it, Pat? Supervisor Tough, now I know.
I'm with Doug.
Supervisor Faldor?
I'm okay with Doug, um, doing what he needs to do before he comes back.
Supervisor Hubbard?
Same.
So you guys don't want to hear it, don't want this back for, tell Doug's story.
What Doug?
And when Doug's?
Okay, Doug, I'll let you know.
Regent, we'll be watching, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Nelson, who wants to begin? Supervisor Hubbard?
How's up there? Uh, thank you, on the twenty-sixth, I attended the community partner meeting uh regarding the Silver Street Transportation. Um, and just to say that it was an awesome Fourth of July parade up in Arnold, thank you.
Supervisor Faldor?
I just wanted to thank staff again, um, Corey, Nanty, Michael, Teresa for um helping um. With setting up the cooling center and over in the city at the library, um, given the. Transition and climate going on over there, their leadership of really stepping up and helping um put that together. Um, I know that um the museum also um gave volunteers for that. And I think just the collaborative effort all around, I just really appreciate that, um, and making it happen, thank you.
Mr. Tough, now?
Well, yeah, I want to announce that yesterday that uh.
Can you put your mic on please?
I'm sorry. I want to announce yesterday through Cog, um, Melissa was able to get a five-point-seven million dollar grant for a new uh transit. Building, uh, facility. And uh we'll be moving forward in that, we have a piece of property over here at the old airport. And we'll be transitioning the CTO there with this new building, we are also looking for grants for a new cog facility to be built there also. That we are moving forward with it with this five-point-seven million dollar grant. And um, I have a LAFCO meeting on Monday, six P M, right here.
All right. Seeing none other, um, yeah, great Fourth of July, so a hot out there for everybody, appreciate everybody who showed up to our many Fourth of July events of us last week and uh. There's any, Madam CEO? Anything?
I don't have anything, but um my husband was involved in the flyover at the Moke Hill Parade.
Very good. Well, thank him. Uh, and counsel? Clerk?
No.
Very well, we stand adjourned, thank you.